All right. Good evening, everyone. This is the October 18th, 2023 Cottage Grove City Council Meeting, which I'm calling to order. Before we move to the Pledge of Allegiance, I did want to mention that in accordance with the requirements of Minnesota Statute, Section 13D dot zero two, Councilmember Tony Cambata will appear remotely via interactive technology from the following public locations. So somebody might be able to see him on the screen. He is at the Hilton Garden Inn Conference Room at 101 East Hiawatha Drive, Wisconsin Dells, Wisconsin, five three nine six five. And I guess we're, unfortunately for him, he's not in some water slide right now. So the next thing on our agenda then is the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you would please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Will the clerk please do the roll?
Councilmember Cambata?
Present.
Councilmember Thede?
Here.
Councilmember Olson?
Here.
Mayor Bailey?
Here. The next item on our agenda this evening is open forum. This is the opportunity for anybody that wants to speak on something that is not on tonight's agenda is welcome to do so. We did have a sign up sheet out in the entryway, and we did have one gentleman, I believe, sign up. And I believe that, is it Raphael?
Robert.
Robert, I'm sorry, or Vanessa?
Emily.
Thank you. I was butching her name. She even tried to spell it out for me to help me along here. So, and you live at 6999 East Point Douglas Road, correct?
Right.
You got it. So if you wanted us to go right up to the podium there, sir, if you're okay, and we'll have you speak to us. It looks like you have some concerns about sidewalks.
I'm gonna pass this iPad to you guys. You can see what the hell I'm talking about. So that I don't have no misconception that what I'm doing is pretty serious. Because we have to fix it. If you have to brighten it up, there's a pen to keep it going. I live at 699 East Point Douglas Road, and the Dominion's property is over there. And there's a sidewalk that runs on the opposite side of the road of Dominion Property. It's a city property, and it's a sidewalk that the city should be maintaining, not left like it is. This has been this way for over a year now, with that hole in the sidewalk. Now, I guess what the city is looking for is one big lawsuit by not fixing it. And it costs maybe $20 to send a man out there to put something in it. Now, there's no excuse for that hole to be there for over a year, when you have nothing but senior citizens walking in that area, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, with cats and dogs. And when they run, you don't know where they're gonna run to, and you're gonna have somebody fall in that hole, and you better have deep pockets because you'll need it. Thank you. I wish you could get it done in the next 48 hours before somebody does get hurt.
Okay. Councilmember Thede might have a question for you.
Yeah. So did you, did you bring this to anybody in the city?
What's that?
Did you, did you actually bring this to anybody in the city to let them know about?
I have brought nobody to it. I'm just bringing it to your attention now. Because I figured the city has had more time, the street department has more time to fix that in one year without having me to come and tell them about it. That's neglect on their part, not mine, their part. Now, you can say the city, the street department's doing a fabulous job. Maybe they are. But I don't think so when you see stuff like that out there on the streets.
Okay. Well, and what we'll do, sir, is we have your information. And once we get feedback from our Public Works team on what they're gonna do, or what, why it's there, I have an idea. I might know why. But they'll, they'll be able to provide feedback to you and to us directly, so that you'll know what's going on.
Have Tammy email me. I think she's got my, Tammy's got my email address over there?
Absolutely.
All right.
Yeah, thanks for letting us know.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. Yep.
All right. Was there anybody else that wanted to speak during open forum on something that's not on tonight's agenda? All right, seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close open forum. And I'll move to number five, which is adoption of this evening's agenda.
Move the agenda.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Thede. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Olson. Any, nope, actually, I'll just go to roll call.
Yes.
Councilmember Cambata?
Aye.
Councilmember Thede?
Aye.
Councilmember Olson?
Aye.
Mayor Bailey?
Aye. All right. Now, we're going to number six, which is presentations. We do have one this evening, which is the Washington County Food Scrap Program. I've been seeing them out and about in the community. And our county commissioner, Carla Bingham, is here to at least start the introductions, I believe. We have a couple of guests from Washington County that are here with us.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Council, and Councilmember Cambata. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak here tonight. As you know, for the last few months, we've been in a pilot phase of just a specific area of our community, the community of Newport, North St. Paul, and Maplewood. Well, I'm here to say that every resident in Cottage Grove and the other three communities I mentioned can now participate in this amazing program. And I just first want to give a shout out to the staff that have been out all summer long, fall long, at various events, fire open houses, booyahs, you name it, they've been there. And they're not done. They, they still have some events to go to. And just really getting the feedback and talking about these, this event, or this program and at the events. And I just think it's really made a lot of difference. We've really been promoting this on social media, so I'm encouraging folks to check that out as well. But I'm, I do have staff here, and we also have some starter kits for you guys. It's under $5, in case you were wondering. But, and also for Cottage Grove residents, or Washington County residents, that would be in Newport as well, or if you're from North St. Paul or Maplewood, you can take one of these too. But I want to turn this over to Annalee Garletts, who is here to talk about the details and kind of give some feedback about the website and different details. So, Annalee? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Again, my name is Annalee Garletts. I'm with Ramsey Washington Recycling and Energy. And I am the supervisor of the food scraps pickup program. And as the commissioner mentioned, I'm gonna run through a little bit about how the program works, about how easy it is to sign up. And again, if there's any Cottage Grove residents in the audience here, we do have some trial kits available at the back of the room. Love it if you grabbed one of these and took it home and gave it a try, so that you could sign up for the program. So, once you determine what size bag that you would like, you can go online, and I'll, I'll run through that here in a second. You'll order your free supply of food scrap bags. You collect your food scraps in the bag, and you, believe it or not, you put these in the trash. And so they're thicker than regular compost bags, and you fill them up, tie a knot, and you can put it in your trash or your dumpster for collection. And from there, it gets hauled away, and it gets sorted out at the facility. A piece of this, now that it's fully rolled out in Cottage Grove, we did do a pilot in the four communities. And it was, we thank Cottage Grove for letting us do the pilot. You were kind of a guinea pig. As we were learning about the program and how it worked, we piloted it with a total of a little over, we gave a little over 2,000 people the opportunity to be participants in the pilot program. And we were able to gather a lot of information. There's lots of moving parts for the program. We learned about customer service, worked with haulers, worked on ordering and delivery. We developed a website, and we worked with staff and vendors. And so from that, we were able to identify education, and I'll talk a little bit about that coming up. We were able to do a lot of testing and a lot of learning. Some things that your residents may see coming to them, everybody received, everybody in the city of Cottage Grove, all households should have received a postcard, and that's in the bottom corner of the presentation. They will soon start seeing geo-targeted ads, letting them know that they're eligible and the program, they're eligible for the program and can sign up. And then also, we've been at community events. And if city council members do know of any other future events we would love to attend, if you think there's a good opportunity, please, please let us know. There's a lot of resources that we have available. If there's any questions that people have, we have a, we have a, a line that people can dial in. It's available in five. We have translations available on the website and on the line, the call-in line, in five different languages. We have a lot of resources. We have videos, instructions, and different notifications that people can opt into. Right now, as of the, as of September 29th, we have just under 5% of the population that's eligible in these communities signed up. So that's just, just a little under 5%. And we're excited to see the, the participants rolling in each day. Food scraps make up about 20% of the waste that goes into the trash. And so by participating in the program, we're keeping that amount out of the trash. And so I know that you have a busy agenda, and I will stand for any questions if you have any.
Fantastic. Well, first of all, thank you for coming. And thank you, Commissioner Bingham, for kind of spearheading this for our neighborhoods down here, our communities on this part of the county. I will tell you, I did have the opportunity a couple of months ago to take a tour, first time I've been into the Newport facility, and to see how that technology works, to pick the machine that picks these green bags out of the trash was unbelievable to me. That the artificial intelligence we have nowadays is pretty amazing. So I definitely encourage everybody to sign up and help reduce, obviously, the amount of product that goes into our landfills and such. And that's ultimately what the goal is here, is better composting of this kind of product. And I've had opportunity to speak with our county commissioner about what, what all that means from the future standpoint, if we can get more and more people to do this. So, I think that's great. Council, any other comments? Councilmember Cambata, anything from you?
No, I'm, I'm just really happy to see that this has taken off, and that it's, I remember the first time Commissioner Bingham came to discuss this project with us. And I'm glad to see it's getting rolled out on a, on a larger scale.
Absolutely. Councilmember Thede did have a question or comment?
Yeah, I don't know if you wanna be handing things out as you, as you're in a parade, but we do have the Monster Bash Parade on the 28th. And if you just go, you go to the Strawberry Fest site, because it's Strawberry Fest runs that, or I can help to get, get, get you signed up if you wanna take and walk down the street, have, have people hand out trial kits. But you can let me know, I guess.
We can, we can talk about the options.
There you go.
That there might be. Maybe Commissioner Bingham wants to.
I'm there.
Yeah, I know she's gonna be there. All right. Well, thank you again for coming and sharing this with us. And I guess what I'll ask from the future standpoint, somewhere down the road, is to work with our staff to come to give us an update, you know, at some point, to let us know the successes you're having, you know, what percentages, things like that, so that we can continue to push this out into the community for the benefit of everyone.
I appreciate that opportunity. We would love to, love to get the word out about how many people are using it, if there's any tips and tricks that we're learning along the way, and to share the successes of the program with people.
You got it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys. All right. The next item on our agenda this evening is consent calendar, or the consent agenda, I should say. Is there anything that anybody wants to pull on consent? Councilmember Olson?
Mayor, I'd like to pull item E, please.
Item E. All right. I think I will just pull D just for comment, just because I'm, we're changing or adding or fixing a couple of appointments due to one less council member.
Making adjustments.
Making adjustments. Thank you. Anybody else? All right. So then I will go ahead for you first. Councilmember Olson, E is appointment to the Convention and Visitors' Bureau.
Thank you, Mayor. And as you mentioned, we are one council member down at the moment. And as everybody is keenly aware, Councilmember Steve Dennis provided his resignation at our last meeting. And of course, as sad as we are to see Steve move on, we certainly have to continue doing business. And part of that is ensuring that we have a full roster on each of our various city commissions. And that includes the convention and visitors' Bureau, which is a relatively new entity. Councilmember Dennis was the chair of that, and I have been the vice chair since the inception. The mayor's been kind enough to offer to have me as the chair, so I will graciously accept that opportunity. And I also wanted to just take a moment to congratulate two new appointees to the commission, one of whom is Eric Olson, not spelled like me. He's an O-L-S-O-N, so he's no relative. I'm an E-N. But I do know Eric and his wife Jenny very well. Jenny serves on our Public Services Commission. And they are both tremendous people. Eric will be a great addition to this Convention and Visitors Bureau Board. And we also have an appointment for Sarah, and I may say the name wrong. If, if I do, Sarah, I apologize. But it is spelled G-R-E-C-U-L-A, and I'm gonna say Grecula, because I have friends that are Draculas, so hopefully this is in the same boat. But I want to welcome Sarah and Eric to the board, and look forward to having you at our next meeting. Thank you, Mayor.
Fantastic. And, and then I'll just piggyback on that. As you mentioned, with Councilmember Dennis, no longer on the council, there was, in essence, three positions, one of which Councilmember Olson just mentioned, that we're doing temporary placements on. What, for the general public, what'll end happening is come in December, I will do, reset up appointments for different people from the council members on the council. By then, I'm assuming we'll have another council member joining us that will be appointed. But just for the public to be aware, my recommendations is the Mayor Pro Tem and the Economic Development Authority personnel will be Tony Cambata. The Investment Committee will be Councilmember Thede. And as mentioned earlier, the convention, Cottage Grove Convention and Visitors Bureau Chair will be Councilmember Justin Olson. So I just wanted to mention for the public, that is the plan for the end of the year. Okay? So, being that we didn't have anything else pulled for consent, I'll look for a motion to approve consent.
Move consent.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Councilmember Olson, and a second by Councilmember Thede. Any comments, Council? No, I don't. All right. So roll call vote.
Councilmember Cambata?
Aye.
Councilmember Thede?
Aye.
Councilmember Olson?
Aye.
Mayor Bailey?
Aye. So if you happen to be here for anything that was on tonight's consent calendar, all of those items have been approved. Now, we'll move to eight, which is approved disbursement, which eight A is to pay the bills.
Move the bills.
We have a motion by Councilmember Olson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember, Thede. Almost said Cambata, because it looked like he was going to speak. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Cambata?
Aye.
Councilmember Thede?
Aye.
Councilmember Olson?
Aye.
Mayor Bailey?
Aye. All right. Next is nine is public hearings. We actually have three public hearings this evening. The first one is the 2023 Pavement Management Assessment Hearing. This is now at the point where all the work is pretty much done, and now we have to pay for it. And so our city, our city Public Works Director, Ryan Burfine, is gonna walk us through this one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So for tonight's public hearing, I'll first have a brief presentation. I'll run through the work that we did, look at some outcomes, some final photos, and those final costs and assessments. Just real quick, we always like to show our pavement management history map. It's been a long-running project going back to 1995. This neighborhood was actually the 1996 pavement management project, which we talked about when the project was ordered last winter. But it's a long, good process that we do to keep our roads in good conditions. And part of that with our policy is assessments to the property owners within the project area. This is a map of the 2023 pavement management area. All the roads in blue are the, the streets that were rehabbed this year with a full new pavement replacement, and then spot curb replacement and spot utility repairs. The neighborhood itself has been around, you know, for quite some time, longer than the pavements. The utilities are actually a lot older than our average neighborhood, so utility costs were a little bit higher than usual, and that was anticipated, just based on the age of the neighborhood. Looking at some before and after photos, I've got a few here in the next two slides. Very common for the type of work that we did. You can see in the before is lots of patching, lots of issues around the manholes. You can see some of the thin overlays that the public works staff had done many years ago to kind of hold that road together. And then also a lot of alligator cracking. So you see some on 80th Street to the frontage road and Homestead Avenue here. And then the after photo of that finished new pavement. And then also on Hemingway Avenue, Hyde Court, very similar, you know, very poor road condition going into the project. And then you have the new asphalt with that spot curb repairs upon completion. For a funding breakdown, our total project cost ended up being just over 3.4 million. You can see the four utility funds that paid for part of that. All those utilities are assessable, so a portion of those utility costs are in the assessment, and the remainder is picked up by the utility funds. The general levy picks up a good portion of the project, just over 1.5 million. And all the total assessments, if they are adopted tonight, were $1,326,125. Here's a map of just all the assessable properties, everything in green. Those are all the single-family residential properties. There's 308 of those. A few park properties, the city does pay that portion of the road. A few park properties, the city does pay that portion of the road that's adjacent to a park property, no different than a private property owner would. And then also you have the church, the religious institution at 8300 Hyde Avenue as well. So for that assessment information, for those single-family units in our assessment policy, there's a very official term of residential buildable lot equivalent. These are one RBLE. They're one single-family unit. Based on the estimates back when we had the ordering of the project on the feasibility report, it was just under $5,000 was the calculation for the assessment. We did multiple special benefit appraisals on a wide variety of those single-family units. They range from $5,800 to $7,100. So they did support the proposed assessment. You know, we do that special benefit appraisal that we do not want to assess more than that amount. And with those project costs coming in lower, which is a good thing, we'd like to see that. The actual assessment proposed is $4,234.50, so you know, about $730 lower than what was proposed last winter. Just over the 15 years, the average annual payment, if it were to go to the taxes and be assessed, is just under $400. And like I mentioned, there was the one religious institution that estimated assessment, based on the feasibility report, was just over $43,000. Did the recalculation, you know, based on the final project costs, at $37,000. But that benefit appraisal only supported $21,900. That was stated at the public hearing as well last winter. So that does cap the assessment. We do not assess more than that special benefit appraisal, so their assessment amount is proposed at $21,900. Talking about assessment terms, if they are adopted tonight, within the first thirty days, if they're paid, which would be November 17, 2023, there's no interest charged. Otherwise, it does go onto the taxes payable over 15 years. The interest rate is always one and a half percent above the bond rates. We're looking at an interest rate of five percent. Partial payment is allowed in that first 30 days, minimum of $500. And deferral is available for a few things, disability, military, and those 65 years of age or older. There is proof needed for that, and interest still accrues during the deferral period. So if folks have specific questions on that, we can work with them afterwards between myself and our finance department. I do want to note, we did receive one objection letter on October 10, 2023, from Hope Community Church. They're the ones at 8300 Hyde Avenue. So we did receive that letter ahead of this meeting, which follows the requirements of the state statute. If the assessments are ordered tonight, they would have to perfect that appeal. There's a few more steps that have to do with the district court and with the city clerk, and we can discuss those if that's something that moves forward. But I do want to make note that we did receive that objection letter. And with that, the recommendations tonight are to hold the assessment hearing, and then also the second recommendations before you as well.
All right. So before we move to open the public hearing, if anybody wants to, is counsel, any questions for Ryan at this time? Nope. Oh, Councilmember Olson?
Ryan, thank you for the presentation and the information. I know you and I and the mayor actually spent some time in this neighborhood, along with our streets supervisor Gary Orloff, kind of looking at the condition of the road and, you know, trying to gauge what we needed to do and when we needed to do it, because we had some neighbors who reached out. And I have been in the neighborhood recently, and it is a night and day difference. I mean, it is unbelievable. And it needed it, needed it in a big way. My question is this. You mentioned some of the infrastructure relative to utilities. And obviously, that neighborhood's a little bit older. It has been through a couple of these now, you know, in the 90s and now today. Can you give a little insight into what exactly, from a utilities perspective, a neighborhood like this presents that is a little bit more challenging based on the age? Obviously, when we have the roads dug up, it's a lot easier to get to various utilities. But can you help people understand what the improvements really are?
Yep, certainly, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Olson. So before any project, we do a lot of utility investigations. We're doing televising of all the pipes in the ground. We look at all the water main, the valve bolts. Are they in good condition? We recondition the hydrants, and we look at all the structures. So based on all of that, we come up with, you know, scope of work to include in the project, because like you said, now is the time to do it. There was no wholesale utility replacements needed, which is good, because that's extremely costly if you have to replace, you know, all the water main or all the sanitary sewer. But what we found and what we'd expect, just, you know, more cracked pipes. So we have to do these things called the short liner, so they actually, they don't do as much work. It's a more cost-effective way to do it. We actually line the pipe, and you don't replace the entire structure. And then with the manholes and such, you know, we're making sure all the lids and the castings are all at the right location height. They're not, you know, leaking. You see them sucking all the road into it with all the patching going on. So we do a lot of additional, like, you know, mudding in the structure and rehabbing all the concrete, and then some lining of the catch basins as well. Because the trouble is, when they start to break down, they just, they pull the road in and all the material right into it. So that's what we're fixing. With that, we also reconditioned all the hydrants, and then we also did a bunch of streetlight work as well.
Perfect. And I know that in the past few years, we have changed our approach to pavement management to some degree, where in addition to doing these sorts of projects, at about a 15-year lifespan or so, we do what's called a milling and overlay on these projects to help them last longer. And I know you've talked about that with us in the past. But if you could just sort of briefly remind people of what the new process looks like, because it will definitely help extend the life of this road, which means that anybody paying an assessment is going to get a lot more bang for their buck, because they don't pay anything for that milling overlay. Could you just maybe walk us through that briefly?
Certainly, Councilmember Olson. So in the past, it was the seal coating applications, which worked really well. But like we know, not just in Cottage Grove, but just as pavements change, MINDOT makes changes to it. Some of those become less effective. So that's where we're seeing this pavement management right now. At around 27 years, this one was right on 27 years. Some of them have a bit more of a range, let's say 22 to 30 years in a neighborhood. But our goal with that milling overlay is, like you said, at that 15, 16-year mark, we're going to do that milling overlay with those funds that we have to replace that top inch and a half of the asphalt. And then we will also do that thin overlay method, like we've talked about. That's done in-house by our staff, no assessment. You know, hopefully around that 30-year of life, and then push these roads for like the actual assessment, full replacement project closer to 40 years is really our goal. You know, we're just starting that now, and then we will, we'll see how we can meet those goals. But so far, it's worked well. The milling overlays have been a great process, and they're just very cost-efficient, right? We don't do a lot of other work. We just take that pavement on or take it off, put the new stuff down, and rain it out in about two weeks, so.
And unlike a project of this nature, there's no assessment for that. There's no cost to the resident in the neighborhood for that, correct?
That's correct. Yep.
Okay, perfect. Good. And I like having you talk about that, because the major benefit is our road's going to last longer. So, you know, you're going to pay your assessment today, and in the past, you may be paying again in 27 to 30 years if we were lucky. And now we're looking at a 40-year lifespan, so that's pretty fantastic. And finally, you know, this is a legal process. Assessments are a legal process. We're bound by state law or statute as it relates to this. And you mentioned that there are some opportunities for people to have deferrals and those kinds of things. So I appreciate you bringing that up, because, you know, those options exist for a reason, and we want people to know that they're there. And every time we do one of these, there's always a few who are eligible for that deferral, and we want to make sure they have that right information. So thank you so much.
All right. So at this point, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. This is the opportunity, if anybody wants to speak on this item or object maybe to the assessments, is welcome to do so at this time. Seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. And we have item number two as a recommendation for counsel. Who would like to take it?
Mayor, I'll adopt resolution, or I'll move, rather, that we adopt Resolution 2023-131 to adopt the assessment role for the 2023 pavement management project.
All right. So I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I will second that.
All right. So we got, there we go. I was pointing. So we got a second by Councilmember Cambada. Any further discussion?
I do.
Councilmember Olson?
Mr. Schenk, do you approve? Are we okay? I know this is your area. Are you happy? Does it look better? Good. Perfect. One of the greatest directors of all time at Park High School, Mr. Daryl Schenk, former teacher of mine too, so I got to make sure he's happy. Otherwise, I'm not going to be happy. So thank you very much for that.
Did you notice his wife just started laughing next to him when you said that?
She's been laughing for a long, long time, so that's, that's okay.
All right. There we go. There we go. All right. So roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Cambada?
Aye.
Councilmember Thede?
Aye.
Councilmember Olson?
Aye.
Mayor Bailey?
Aye. Motion carries. All right. The next item under public hearings is the Tall Weed Assessment Hearing, and Brenda Melanowski is going to take us through this one. So welcome, Brenda.
Mayor, members of the council, tonight you'll be holding a public hearing for the removal of noxious weeds and plants from private property, and that is in accordance with our city code. Specifically, it is unlawful to allow or permit any growth of weeds, grass, brush, or other rank vegetation to a height greater than eight inches. In 2023, our city code enforcement officer did issue 36 letters to property owners for violations of that code. The owners were given five days to abate that condition, or else the letter stated that the city would come in, abate the condition, and invoice the property for that amount. In five instances, the city did have to hire a contractor to remove, to mow the lawn. And then we did invoice those properties for the cost of that lawn mowing and for the cost of, and the administrative fee. On four of the occasions on those invoices, they did not pay the city. So City Council, at your meeting on September 20, you did declare costs, and we sent assessment notices to those property owners. One property since that time has paid, so we did remove that from the roll this evening. Counsel, you should, you know, hold the public hearing and consider the assessment. If you do adopt the assessment, it will, if it's not paid in the next 30 days, it will be certified to their property taxes next year. I would like to note, of the three that are on the roll this evening, we did receive payment this week on one of them, so they will already be paying in the 30 days, and so they will not be certified to the property taxes. So with that, you would hold the public hearing and consider the resolution.
All right. Thank you, Brenda. Comments, counsel? All right. I will go ahead then and open this public hearing. If there is anybody in the audience that wants to speak on this item, is welcome to do so at this time. Anybody at all? All right. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing here, and we'll look for a motion.
I would move to approve Resolution 2023-132, adopting service charges for the removal of noxious weeds and plants from private property.
All right. So I have a motion by Councilmember Thede. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Olson. Any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilmember Cambada?
Aye.
Councilmember Thede?
Aye.
Councilmember Olson?
Aye.
Mayor Bailey?
Aye. Motion carries. And then finally, for public hearings this evening, we do have the Street Reconstruction and Overlay Plan public hearing, and Brenda's going to also start us through this one. I think you may have somebody here to introduce, but I'll turn it over to you.
Mayor, members of the city council, this year we did do the 10-year financial management plan earlier this year. And the things that I incorporated were our operating budget, staffing, equipment replacement, pavement management programs. So the assessment hearing that we had this evening, and another portion were street reconstruction projects, projects such as East Point Douglas, Eightieth Street. And so we incorporated the debt payments for those projects that needed to be done for streets into our financial management plan. And so now we have the opportunity to do a street reconstruction overlay plan based on our financial management plan. Since this is the first time that the city has followed this process, Ellers did assist us in preparation of the plan. And I do have Keith Dahl here from Ellers to review it with you and take any questions.
Fantastic. Thank you. Welcome, Keith.
Good evening, mayor, members of the city council. Before you tonight is the Street Reconstruction and Overlay Plan, more commonly referred to as an SROP. It lays out the revenues and expenses for the projects that we have identified in that plan over a five-year horizon. So we're looking from 2024 to 2028. Now, this hasn't been the traditional approach that the city has taken to street reconstruction projects. Typically, you use the assessment process with the improvement bonds. But this is another option if you're not able to achieve that 20% of project cost being assessed against benefiting property owners. With an SROP, you are able to assess, but if that assessment amount is under that 20%, this is when this approach comes in handy. Now, it is subject to a 30-day reverse referendum, which means that after we hold the public hearing and take comments, if the city clerk receives a petition from signatures of 5% of the voters from the last general election, this item would go for a referendum, go for a vote. So now, with that, just looking at what the revenues and the expenses are, and going off of what was in the financial management plan and the capital improvement plan, we did add some inflation to account for time, anticipating that costs may rise over this five-year horizon. And we also accounted for some contingency. On the amount that we would potentially issue for bonds, this is a not-to-exceed amount. So the amount that you end up issuing for these various years could be less. It does not mean, does not require, or commit the city council to issuing bonds of that size. It's just a maximum amount. And we also incorporated the cost of issuance, capitalized interest, and underwriter discount in that size. So that's just a high-level general overview of the Street Reconstruction and Overlay Plan. And I can turn it back over to the mayor for any questions that he or the council may have for me.
All right. Sounds good. And I do know the council, but general public may not know, we've actually been discussing this program in our workshop session. So it's different for Cottage Grove than what we've done in the past, but actually, in my opinion, a great planning tool and foresee needs budget-wise going into the, into the future. Counsel, any questions for Keith here or Brenda? All right. I'm not seeing any. You did a great job there. So I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Again, this is the opportunity for anybody who wants to speak on this item is welcome to do so. Is there anybody at all? All right. Then I will go ahead and close the public hearing, and counsel, we do have a motion before us.
Mayor, I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 2023-133, adopting a street reconstruction and overlay plan and approving the issuance of general obligation street reconstruction bonds.
All right. So I have a motion by Councilmember Olson. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Second by Councilmember Cambada. Any further discussion, counsel? All right. Seeing none, I will go to roll call.
Councilmember Cambada?
Aye.
Councilmember Thede?
Aye.
Councilmember Olson?
Aye.
Mayor Bailey?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks for coming tonight. Next 10 is bit awards are in this evening. 11 is the regular agenda, and we do have one item on our regular agenda tonight, which is the cannabis and tobacco use on public properties and public places. And our city attorney, Corey Land, is going to take us through this one. Welcome.
Thank you, honor members of the council. I think I told you in July I'd be back in front of you to talk about cannabis every month, because that's just where we are. We're dealing with the legislation that was bestowed upon us in May. So in July, we talked about a moratorium, public use of cannabis in public places. We talked about in August, then you adopted a moratorium. But you didn't want to take action on a public place ordinance at that time, prohibiting the use of cannabis in public places. But instead, you wanted to hear some feedback from other commissions. I mean, that's what you have the commissions for, is to provide you with what the residents think about things that you are making policy-level decisions about. And so in September, we did hold a meeting with the Parks Commission and the Public Safety Commission to talk about these three cannabis-related topics. And I know tobacco is not a cannabis topic, but it was sort of an outflow from the discussion. At that September 11 meeting, I think we had a pretty good, I don't know how many people are on both commissions, but I felt like it was a pretty good turnout from both of them. And in general, from both of them. And in general, I would say more than a majority supported all three ordinances. The first one is prohibiting smoking and vaping of cannabis in public places. The second is they felt like tobacco use, smoking and vaping should be treated the same, because it's a public health issue. And third, the penalty, the statute does not allow, does not provide a penalty for underage use of cannabis, and they overwhelmingly supported that there should be a penalty. So we'll go through each of those ordinances, which have been prepared separately. They are three different sections of the code, but I felt like you really needed to discuss them and approve them as separate ordinances instead of packaging them in one. As you know, the state law indicates that the use of cannabis is restricted to certain places. It is only allowed in a private home, inside, outside, your yard, your curtilage, which is considered areas of, that the general public could cross, such as your driveway or your sidewalk to get your front door, private property with the permission of the owner, or any business that has an onsite consumption license, which there are none, because that is only, can be issued from the Office of Cannabis Management. And that will not be operational until 2025. However, there's the two caveats, little asterisks, in the yes, they can smoke or vape in these three locations, but it must be outside the presence of a minor, and it cannot violate the Clean Indoor Air Act. But again, there's no penalty in the statute. So that's what we are discussing is, is the legislation does state that the city can provide a penalty and prohibit public places, but the penalty can be no more than a petty misdemeanor. So the way we've defined public places in this ordinance is that it is property generally open to or accessible by the public, and it includes public property. And then we define public property as it is being owned by the city. So that can be real property, buildings, parking lots, rights of way, trails and sidewalks. So cannabis, smoking and vaping of cannabis, of the adult-use version of cannabis would be prohibited in public places, both any place generally accessible to the public as well as on public property. So we recommend adopting an ordinance prohibiting smoking or vaping cannabis on public property and in public places. The violation would be a petty misdemeanor, and the fine would be $100. This would be what we call a payable ticket. So if someone were to receive a citation for this, they can pay it, and it does not show up in any kind of a criminal history. It's like getting a parking ticket. Failure to pay it is where you get into trouble, but that is not, the petty misdemeanor is not intended to have any kind of criminal consequences. But then, out from that, you wanted also the, the Parks Commission and the Public Safety Commission to weigh on whether or not we should prohibit tobacco smoking and vaping in our public parks, because it was, even though it hasn't been an issue, it's a public health issue, just as smoking and vaping of cannabis is a public health issue. And the, the joint committee meeting did recommend adopting an ordinance prohibiting the smoking and vaping, vaping of tobacco in public parks. So it's not as broad as the smoking and vaping of cannabis. It's restricted to just public parks, but they felt that River Oaks is sort of a separate kind of park. It's not really a park, because you got to pay to play. So that's more of a venue than it is a park. The violation would be the same, however, as, as the cannabis smoking and vaping would be a petty misdemeanor, and the fine would be $100. As far as underage use, it is illegal for anyone under the age of 21 to use any form of cannabis, whether it's a 0.3% or less or 0.3% or more. It is illegal. But again, the legislature decided not to punish the children, and so there's no penalty for them to violate. So we are recommending adopting an ordinance prohibiting underage possession and use of cannabis products. So it's anyone under the age of 21. The penalty should mirror the state law on underage consumption of alcohol. Both are intoxicating substances, and violations would be a misdemeanor, but the penalty or the fine would be $100. Now, anyone under 18 is going to qualify for a diversion program. Anyone between 18 and 21, it's like getting an underage consumption ticket when you're in college. So that's, that's the penalty. It would be a misdemeanor. So we are recommending you discuss all three ordinances and recommending approval, but discuss and approve them separately.
All right. So first question is obviously for counsel. Is there any questions you have for our city attorney, Corey Land?
I've got one.
Councilmember Cambada, go ahead.
When researching these ordinance, I'm sure you compared them against other municipalities and other case law. Is there, is there any reason to think that by adopting these ordinances, they may be challenged by an individual for their constitutionality or kind of overreach?
Councilmember Cambada and counsel, given its similarity to a prohibition on tobacco use in a park, and I'm not aware of any challenges to those ordinances under a public health, safety, welfare sort of justification, I feel like that's a pretty solid ground. And prohibiting use of cannabis in public places is specifically authorized in the legislation. It says cities can't. It is prohibited in public places. Don't, I mean, please don't misunderstand. It is not allowed in public places today, but there's no penalty. So unless you say it out loud in your ordinance, I mean it, it's not allowed, and here's how you will be punished, there's no way to enforce it. So that is absolutely 100% solid.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Olson, any other comment?
Yes. Thank you to our city attorney. We know it's serious when she walks from there to there. So I appreciate you taking the time to bring this forward. I was fortunate enough, as was Councilmember Cambada, to be part of the commission meeting, and I can speak from being part of that meeting, that there was overwhelming support for each of these items. I really want to thank our commissioners. We have advisory commissions to the city council for a reason. They exist for a reason, and the reason is, we want to have as many citizen voices of varying backgrounds, experiences, points of view, to come online whenever we're dealing with challenging situations like this. And their job is to advise the city council. Their job is to, to tell us, hey, you know, we've looked at this. This is what we think. This is what we recommend that you do. Ultimately, it's our decision. We're the ones who, you know, have to make the call. But it's always helpful to have input from as many people as we got in that commission meeting, and it was very well attended. Lot of great questions, lot of great dialogue, my compliments to all the commission members and the various staff liaisons who were in the building for that meeting. And I think the outcome of that is pretty solid. So I'm certainly in support of all of these recommendations, based on the fact that this is what the commissions brought forth to us as well. But I want to really give them the credit they deserve for, for helping us with this, because this was a heavy lift.
All right. Councilmember Thede?
And, and just to be clear, I mean, this covers any type of cannabis, no matter what form it's in?
Members of the council, it is smoking and vaping of cannabis. So if somebody's eating a gummy bear, we're not going to go up and try to test the gummy bear to see if it was just purchased at your local candy store or the CBD shop. It's just smoking and vaping.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other comments from counsel at this point, you want these as three separate, correct? I just want to make sure we're clear. So counsel, I know it was up there, but Tony's, I see Tony's smiling face there, but do you want to start it in the packet?
I will. Mayor, I'll move to approve an ordinance amending Cottage Grove City Code by enacting Title V, Chapter 1, Section 6, prohibiting cannabis use on public property and in public places.
All right, so I have a motion by Councilmember Olson. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll second.
All right, I got Councilmember Thede beat you to the punch, punch there, Councilmember Cambada. Any further discussion, counsel? All right, roll call vote.
Councilmember Cambada?
Aye.
Councilmember Thede?
Aye.
Councilmember Olson?
Aye.
Mayor Bailey?
Aye. Motion carries. Then we got number two?
I will move, make a motion to approve an ordinance amending Cottage Grove City Code by amending Title VII, Chapter 3, Section 4, prohibiting smoking and vaping tobacco products in public parks.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Thede. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Councilmember Cambada. Again, any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Councilmember Cambada?
Aye.
Councilmember Thede?
Aye.
Councilmember Olson?
Aye.
Mayor Bailey?
Aye. Motion carries. And finally, number three?
Mayor, I'll move to approve an ordinance amending Cottage Grove City Code by enacting Title V, Chapter 1, Section 7, underage possession and use of cannabis products.
All right, so we have a motion again by Councilmember Olson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Thede. Again, any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilmember Cambada?
Aye.
Councilmember Thede?
Aye.
Councilmember Olson?
Aye.
Mayor Bailey?
Aye. All motions carried. Thank you, Attorney Lynn. All right, we're moving on to 12, which is council comments or requests. I will start with Councilmember Cambada. Is there anything you would like to share with the council or the public?
In light of the, the new appointments to our various volunteer commissions, I did think it was noteworthy to just give credit and give thanks to our volunteers, citizens of Cottage Grove, who, for, for no compensation other than their goodwill, donate their time and input to our volunteer commissions. It is an essential part of what we do in shaping our ordinance and making the city run as smoothly as it does. So thank you to all of our volunteers.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Cambada. Good comment. All right, I guess I'll move to Councilmember Thede.
Yeah, I mentioned it a little earlier, but on Saturday, October 28th, is the Monster Bash Parade. It'll be over on East Point Douglas Road between Applebee's, and it, it actually starts at the District Administration Center for the school. Starts at 10:00 a.m. It's a fun parade and everything, and, and if you go out to cottagegrovestrawberryfest.com backslash, and then click on the Monster Bash deal, there's a parade application out there, and it shows the parade route, and, and I think it, you should, supposed to get your application in by the 20th. So what is today, 18th? So that's by Friday. So remember that, Friday, the 20th, you want to get your application in to be in the Monster Bash Parade. And, and I'm pretty lucky, because I don't even have to wear a costume, and I'm scary. So.
All right, that's it for you. All right, Councilmember Olson?
You know, Dave's always a tough act to follow. I'll just say that. First of all, I want to take a moment to congratulate our Park of Cottage Grove High School Boys Soccer Team, who are in the state tournament. They are section champions. They won the other night, and I know that we're all going to get behind them as a community here in Cottage Grove. It's always fun when we have one of our teams in the state tournament. The mayor and I and, and some others had an opportunity to go out to Target Field to watch our Park High Boys Baseball Team a couple of years ago play in the state tournament final. And it really didn't go our way that day, unfortunately, but you know what? It was super fun following that group all the way through the sections and into the state tournament, and it's a real honor for our community to have teams that, that represent us in the state tournament. So again, congratulations to Park Boys Soccer, and let's hope that one of these council meetings coming up soon, we can congratulate you on a state championship. We would love that. The second thing that I wanted to bring up today is, you may notice that I'm wearing a shirt that says Beyond the Yellow Ribbon, and I did that on purpose. As a member of our Beyond the Yellow Ribbon team here in the city of Cottage Grove, one of the things that we do is we support families who may be challenged with different situations related to their participation as members of our armed forces. And one of the most difficult is when we have National Guard soldiers who get deployed, and that deployment call can come at any time. With the conflict that is currently taking place in Israel and the, the Gaza Strip and the Palestinian-held territory, a number of National Guard soldiers from across the country have been called into active duty. And right now, the number is over 2,000, and in the state of Minnesota, we have a couple of different armories who are going to be deployed, because they are going to be there to support some of the aircraft carriers and, and other military personnel that are already there in that region. And I just wanted to take a minute to ask for everybody, please give some thought to the fact that we're approaching the holiday season, and there's going to be a lot of families out there who may have mom or dad or both, or aunt, uncle, son, daughter, et cetera, who aren't going to be around this holiday season because of this situation, and they don't really have control over when those deployments happen. So we're here as part of the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon team to help support those families. If there's anybody in need that you know of, or anybody who is in need, who is watching this at home, I would ask that you please reach out to our Beyond the Yellow Ribbon team. You can contact me directly. My phone number and email and all the rest of it is all over the place. All you got to do is Google me. I am not the Justin Olson who is an Olympic snowboarder, just so you know. You probably can tell by looking at me, but I want to clarify, that's not me. I'm the other guy. But I am willing to have that conversation with you, and we want to help those families have a great holiday season. So please lean on us if there's a need. And with that, mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Olson. So interestingly enough, we're actually getting into the, the holiday season, as you were just mentioning, and there are all kinds of events coming up, and I will just mention one real quick, excuse me, or one comment real quick for, for staff, as I think maybe during our first meeting in November, maybe we'd want to have a, a review of all the events that are going to be coming up between end of November into December. There are a couple, though, that before we have our next council meeting, that I did want to bring up, and obviously, one was the Monster Bash Parade, which is a great event here in Cottage Grove. The other one is on October 25th at the Ice Arena is the Halloween Skating Spooktacular, which is $10 per skater, and then if you need to rent skates, which you can there, it's $5 for the skate rental, and you can go to the city website to check that out. The other item is Pumpkin Chuck, and I wasn't able to get there last year to see this, but I heard it was pretty amazing.
Greatest thing ever.
And it is free. It is at Peter Thompson Park, and it's on, on November 2nd of this year, between 3:30 and 5:30. So I encourage anybody that likes to maybe chuck a pumpkin, can absolutely come out to Peter Thompson Park and enjoy the festivities of that. And then, again, because we're getting into the beginning of November, the other two, well, one main item I want to mention is down at River Oaks, they are going to be having an event that they've had, not had for a couple of years, which a couple of us, actually all of us up here, have had the opportunity to be, participate in or participate, or to be a part of, and that's what's called the Friendsgiving, which is just an opportunity to meet with friends and family, if you'd like, for a family-style meal, and that is November 10th. And so I encourage the public, if you want to find out more information, either check out the city's website or River Oaks website. I know we got a large group of, actually now two tables, I think, of people that I've talked to, because once you've experienced this at River Oaks and the great food by our chefs and such, and our staff, you want to go back, and it's, it's absolutely amazing. So being that that is also coming before or right close to the next council meeting, and I'm assuming they're going to need to have head counts by then, and I don't have the fee in front of me. I don't recall what the fee is. Zach, do you remember it all? So I just, but again, I don't off the top of my head, but I will tell you, it's very much worth it, and it's a great, great event to be participating in. All right. But again, we'll have some additional items for the Hometown Holiday Celebration at the end of November, and then we did just recently find out that the Holiday Train will be back in Cottage Grove on Sunday, or Sunday, December 10th at, I believe, about 5 o'clock. And so they're excited to be back in town. They're celebrating, I believe, is it 40 years? 40-year celebration, so they're very excited to be back in Cottage Grove. So I thought I would show those.
I think they're doing the, aren't they doing the collect, the paper goods and, and what have you for the Holiday Train?
That is prior, and that's why, yeah, that is why I wanted to make sure that we catch all those things and share with the public what are some of the other events, things that are coming up. So I think that is, that is perfect. All right. So that was it on council comments or requests. 13 is a workshop, which is open to public, which we do not have any this evening. On 14, we do have a workshop in, or a hearing, I should say, and it's a license revocation hearing. say, and it's a license revocation hearing, which is closed to the public. And just so the public is aware, pursuant to Minnesota Statutes, Section 13D dot 05, subsection 2A2, we are, will, as a council, be considering the tobacco license revocation, or revocations, excuse me, of Cottage Grove Tobacco LLC and Cottage Grove 4G LLC doing business as Smokeleaf, which will involve the discussion of active investigation, investigative data as defined in Minnesota Statutes, Section 13 dot 82 subdivision 7. So the council, along with certain staff and the representatives that are here representing those business, that business or businesses, will be moving to the training room. And so we will not be adjourning in here. And then once the discussions have happened between the council staff and the representatives, we will then open the meeting in the, in the training room, so that the public can hear what the decision has been made publicly by the council. So at this point, I'll just say goodnight to everybody from in here, and Counsel will join in the conference room. And Tony, you have a third link. So we'll get you on your third link now, okay? Thank you.